Apologies, apologies. I think it was that one.
Which one?
This one. Yeah. Not sure which mic it was. That's one of those.
Good afternoon. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Caldwell, Burleson County, Texas, will convene in a regular meeting at the City Hall. Regular meeting place thereof at five thirty P M. March twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. There is a quorum present, so we will begin. Our pledge will be given by Cameron McColler and our indication tonight by Rhonda Tomasi. Please stand.
So Father, we come with thanks tonight. And first of all, we thank you that you're the one in charge of Caldwell as it goes to its extension. And thank you for wise choices and wise decisions that are made. We want to proclaim peace over our atmosphere. We thank you for the rain. And we thank you that you are ordering our steps and you are giving wisdom and knowledge to the City Council regarding some projects coming up this day in your mind. So we thank you, sir, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
Uh, we don't have any citizens to be heard on agenda items, but we do have a few that are to be heard on city-related topics. And our first one tonight is Mr. Brian Crawford.
So, uh, I guess in October of two thousand and twenty-one, I got solar panels installed in my house. I don't know if I'm the first one in town, but right over this way. But anyways, in that time, uh, they got up and running everything. You know, we had the pretty bad winter storm and all that stuff. I had the battery. They've proven to be really pretty great. But, um, so far, I haven't really benefited from them in terms of financially, you know, as you normally would, because there is no buyback program. So I guess what I wanted to bring up, one was if there was one on the horizon, maybe for all the, there's a lot of new houses coming in, you know? And also because I've had a lot of people just anecdotally come to me or come actually to my home, like to the house, knock on the door, to ask about the panels and, you know, about how effective they are, like, you know, how I got them, which company? If having the battery was worth it, things like, you know, because it's a pretty considerable kind of an investment. But anyways, um, again, that's just anecdotal, but a lot of people have been repelled from the idea because there is no buyback program. So what I was wanting to ask, if there wasn't a buyback program, if instead there would be something that would just eliminate my bill? You know, I don't expect there to be an entire apparatus to pay me back for something you didn't tell me to get, you know? But the idea would be just something that could eliminate the bill because, for instance, on the paper, you see, this is skewed somewhat by, uh, you know, the winter and months in which there wasn't a lot of sun. But, uh, you guys sent me eight point four megawatts and I gave you back three point five. You know, it's, again, this, this will include from twenty-one to twenty-three, four months in which the system was on, but I wasn't, um, but the solar panels were not, you know, you guys had, there's a whole process for that, basically. And I got a meter at that point that is a return and a deliver meter. Anyways, um, so this is skewed a little bit, probably not so much in my favor, but I thought this data is data. So anyways, like I said, uh, I'm giving you guys a lot back. And this specifically, um, you can see I produced eleven point six megawatts just in that time, you know? Um, and then we had a lot of times, like, there was a pretty bad tornado, remember? Stuff like that in which power never went off, it was pretty good. And actually, the next day, you know, if there wasn't power during that day, I was also still giving you. Imagine all the houses doing that, you know, the load that would take off for you guys. But again, I spoke with Mr. White for a second there, and there's a lot of conversations that have to probably happen. But again, I don't expect there to be an infrastructure put in place just for me. Because again, I don't know how many people have solar panels in Caldwell. I don't think it's a huge amount, not yet, but, uh, I guess somebody's got to be the first one to ask. And if it's me, that's, that's all right. Yeah. All right, now I don't really have much else.
Okay.
I exist and they exist.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Cranford with the end.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cranford. Um, after the community input today, I will make a statement and then there will be no further discussion after that. Uh, next up, we have Mr. Gordon Richardson.
I came tonight to, uh, talk a little bit about my feelings of, of the Civic Center and, uh, the background that I have as a resident of Caldwell since nineteen sixty-seven. Uh, Mr. Broadus put money back that some of you know about for over twenty years, so that when the time came to have a Civic Center, the city just wrote a check for it. Uh, there wasn't any, any debt involved in it. It was just, uh, delivered to the city through his, uh, efforts over the twenty years. His intention was that the Civic Center would be the jewel of the community, that it would be open and available to all different groups, uh, the schools, uh, different civic groups, Lions Club, Rotary, so forth and so on. And it would be attended on a regular basis. Uh, in addition to that, as you all know, there's a museum that was established in the center. And, uh, I was in, uh, the Gate Twelve Restaurant recently in Color Station. Some, the owner knew that I was from Caldwell and he introduced me to these people from Lubbock, who said they came all the way from Lubbock to come to the museum and couldn't get in. They were very disappointed, to say the least. And when you look back at the intention of the Civic Center, it was considered to be, and hopefully to be manned, uh, when people would come in and it would be used as a focal center for people that were looking for help, uh, different things in the community. So, uh, I, I know there's been some efforts to cut back on the attendance there, and I think that it's unfortunate that the vision that Mr. Broadus had, uh, is not continued because of the lack of, uh, employees on the job there. And I guess the argument had, had been made that the employees are there and they're not always busy, but different assignments could be put in their, their position to answer the telephone, give directions and so forth. But, uh, I'm just hopeful that Mr. Broadus's vision, uh, would be continued and not diminished. You know, I think you probably are aware that the high school for some years had their, uh, their dance, if you will, at the Civic Center, and the fees have gone up so much that they've had to give up, uh, having a function there. That's really unfortunate. I know all of our taxes in this room have gone up, including mine. And, uh, I would hope that the Civic Center could be available to functions like the, uh, Caldwell High School and other functions. And they wouldn't be denied availability because of fees involved. So I'm just here as a, as a citizen and, and hopeful that the Civic Center will be treated like the jewel of Caldwell that it is. And, uh, I appreciate the opportunity you've given me.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Uh, next up, we have Mr. Charles Sebaston.
I have lived in Caldwell the last fifty-one years. Grew up in Burleson County. Burleson County is my home. And I'm proud of the town where I live. I'm proud of our county. And I've seen things that we, we've tried to do and, and work in the direction. I have a concern about, uh, our Civic Center. I understand why it was built. I recognize the, uh, uh, its purpose. I'm also very much aware of, of the, uh, interest that we've had from other counties and other cities about, uh, our Civic Center as being a bright star within our community and very concerned about taking away and, and, uh, turning it into something that was not planned for when, when it was built. Money raised was from, uh, uh, hotel motel taxes and, uh, was used to, uh, to build that building. And we've, we've been able to use it. It's been, as noted earlier, by numerous organizations from high school, school system, to our Lions and our Rotary Club and to others who want to have various functions here in our, at our Civic Center. And, and I appear before you today for the purpose of saying, I don't think that turning it into a library would be in the best interest of our community or our county. I think that, uh, we can, we can find other, other means of, of addressing those issues without destroying our, our Civic Center and, and what we have and what we've been able to build. I'm, I'm thankful to have had, had, uh, an opportunity on various occasions to have functions in the Civic Center. And, uh, I, I certainly, uh, would hope that you as a city council would, would protect our Civic Center and, and allow it to remain the purpose that it was initially built for. That's the, that's a concern that, that I have. And, and, uh, I would very much oppose turning it into something other than what it was originally built for. It's, it's a, uh, uh, a very, very bright star within our community. We have something to offer that other communities do not have. And I think that's very critical in what we do. There, there are ways, uh, around addressing the, uh, library issue, uh, working with our schools, uh, working with the county, working with the city, all contributing to be able to, if we need a library, if that's what our need is, let's address, let's address that issue, but let's not destroy something, uh, in, in addressing it. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Sebaston. Thank you all for your input today on the subject that is obviously very important to you. I am not quite sure where all of the misinformation is coming from, but I have an idea. The library move to the Civic Center has only been a discussion by the council. I also hope that you all would have enough faith in us as a council to know that we would never make a decision of this magnitude without first seeking community input. Again, this was only a topic of discussion, not a done deal. The Civic Center is celebrating twenty years of being open, and the city has never made a profit from the rentals of the Civic Center. That is why the council has had numerous conversations about improving the efficiency of the operations of the Civic Center. If the move was made, the Civic Center would still be available for rental, for club and corporate meetings, as well as large events such as banquets, and of course, the museum would remain open. The city is trying to use its existing resources to keep the city within budget, especially in this time in which high inflation and probable increase in interest rates will slow the economy even more than it already has. The city is trying to control spending, and this move could be a viable option. The existing library is over sixty years old and needs slab and structural repair at a cost estimated at over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Plus, the programs that Heidi Fraser has put in place have been so successful that the library is simply not large enough to accommodate the growing number of participants that are utilizing these community-sponsored programs. To me, this is a great problem to have. Caldwell is growing, and with growth comes change. We, as a city council, must have the courage to implement changes that improve Caldwell and benefit all citizens of Caldwell. We must have the strength to see it through and the faith that everything will turn out for the best. In the words of John F. Kennedy, "Change is the law of life, and those who look only to the past or the present will surely miss the future." I appreciate the citizens that have personally reached out to me to discuss this because to me, that is what defines Caldwell. Our community is a great community where we can have a serious conversation about something that you feel passionate about. If any of you want to contact me or any of the council members, um, we all have our business cards. You can email us, um, you can call Melissa, um. We don't respond to Facebook critics, um, that's just not, to me, the place to, to address a situation, especially of this magnitude. So you won't see any reply from the city or from any of us personally on Facebook about this. Um, but again, every single person that came to me with an issue about the library moving to the Civic Center, every single one of you had some false information. And I'm not, I, I know where it came from, but I'm hoping that this, this meeting will correct that because, again, I would hope that you would have enough faith in us that we would never make a decision of this magnitude without community input. That's all I have to say, and we will proceed. On the consent agenda, um, we are going to consider the approval of the minutes of the February meetings and consider approval to authorize city staff to seek time warrant bids in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars for capital improvement projects and assets to be funded by I S debt rate for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda items?
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Next, under regular agenda items, the Caldwell Municipal Election Cancellation Order.
In your packet, you'll see that we have, we had no one else sign up for the election. Unopposed candidates. You'll see the order of cancellation and the cer- certification of unopposed candidates. And, um, this will terminate the election for this year.
I'll need a, um, do we have a motion to, um, cancel the Caldwell Municipal Election? Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Next, we will be, um, hearing from Jared from Strand, and he will be talking about, uh, utilizing C D B G, uh, method of distribution funds for detention pond project to improve drainage flows for the northwest portion of the city.
Well, just passing that out, I was kind of teed this up. These are the mid-mog funds that we procure. We're, you know, we went through the process, the R P process to the grant administrators. Also, our due process to establish Strand as the engineer on this project. The amount awarded was eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred dollars. Uh, the next three budget items will deal with the projects that we're hoping to get done with some of that money. At least, I, I don't know that we'll catch all three of these items at all as far as, uh, you know, the, the allotment of money that we're given, but, you know, as we, as we go through this, we probably have these in order how we want to pick these off. So if we are able to bid out two or three and then do one as an alternate package, that's probably what we'd do. I think Jared will be able to answer questions on just about any of them. I should have him answering as well, but I'll, I'll hand it over to him to kind of discuss. What he's going to go over is a drainage study that was performed about a year ago.
Ahead of twenty, yeah, ahead of twenty-one.
Okay, twenty-one. And then kind of talk about the, the detention project a little bit.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Council. Uh, we were tasked with, uh, investigating the drainage, uh, and flooding issues in the northwest part of the city, kind of by the industrial park, uh, about a year ago. And, uh, to start with, we found, we, uh, established the existing conditions, went out there and surveyed, uh, existing channels, existing phone structures. Kind of got all the existing infrastructure from basically industrial park to, uh, kind of the baseball field for the, the drainage channel that was out. Um, so what you have in front of you, uh, is, the first page there is a picture of the, uh, area that would benefit from this drainage project. And then if you'd like to flip to page two, we, with the input of city staff, established that we could use a hundred-year storm as an evaluation criteria. And with that, we went through and investigated different storm durations. Uh, so we used Alice fourteen, uh, storm water criteria to do that. Uh, just to kind of give you perspective, a hundred-year storm would be, uh, two point eight, eight, two point nine inches in thirty minutes. Uh, three point eight, seven inches in sixty minutes. And this is rainfall. Uh, five point two inches of rain in two hours, six point two inches of rain in three hours, eight inches of rain in six hours, or ten inches of rain in twelve hours. So those are all considered one-hundred-year storms. Uh, so we evaluated all of those to find which one had the biggest impact on this area as far as flooding goes. And, uh, we found that to be the, the three-hour storm. So, uh, six point two inches in three hours created the, kind of the heat map or the flooding map you see in the second picture. Uh, and if you go ahead and play the video, uh, this kind of shows what, what you showed the first one. So this is a video of the existing conditions and the flooding that's seen. Blue, the bluer colors are, are less deep water, but as they get lighter, it's deeper, that's deeper water. And then, so you can see with duration of the storm, how, uh, the area kind of just, it kind of just fills up and then starts to retreat. With this information, we've kind of identified the, in the top left there, there's our, our corner of vacant land and identified that as a potential area that a detention basin could be placed. And what that would do is it would capture the water and then let it out slowly. Uh, so downstream, you wouldn't see as big of an impact. A couple of, so that was the first thing that we tried. We put that in the model, modeled that, um, and quickly saw that there were some other issues that needed to be addressed. If you notice the industrial park, uh, where that driveway is, water stage is up at that. water stage is up at that area, and it goes over San Antonio and then down Temple. So that's another area that we'd like to address is increase the number of pipes from two to four pipes there to convey that water under the industrial park drive towards the area where that detention basin is. And then a third area is, is a box culvert on Park there. Or Front Street, Front and Fourth. There's a box culvert there, and we upsize that just to kind of, not, lessen the flow restriction. Could you go to the second video? So with all of those improvements, it's something more like this, where, again, it's a heat map, so the dark red color is deep water, but that's a detention pond. So it's basically holding back that water and then letting it flow out slowly. You will see there is a little bit of light blue in here, and that's, that's capturing the 0-3-inch standing water, and then, you know, a large storm, that could just be the amount of water sitting in the grass. So you will notice in the, the third, third PDF or the third exhibit I got there, that's, that's showing the difference, the improvements we make or anticipated to make, so between the second and the third video there, or the second and the third page. I actually have those on the, in the folder as well. Figure three is the existing, just for the audience. And then figure five would be what the proposed would look like. So that's existing, existing flooding, and the lighter, the green is, is less flow. The red gets all the way up to a little over five feet. So that, that pipe under, by the railroad track there, that kind of stages up. And that's water flow through, but you can see the difference here. There's hardly any flooding or seeing water within that whole residential area as regards to detaining that water upstream.
So can you go back to figure three? We were amazed at staff at how accurate this was. I remember a few years ago, they went to shut down Highway 21 because the water was that deep. And that, that's exactly kind of what's pictured here and what's been modeled. So I think you guys feel like this is a good project to help mitigate the water.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and I've been told by our, our grand administrator that this is going to be an excellent project to do as a part of this mid-mog.
So there's, there's a great deal of benefit to everyone downstream of that industrial park, including, including text dots, 21. Any questions? Comments?
It was May of 2021, yes? And how much rain in that time? A lot, I'm sure, right?
Yeah.
So that would have fallen under the 100-year?
Could have, yeah. Hurricane Harvey was somewhere between a 500 and 1,000-year storm. One misconception is that doesn't mean this storm happens once every 100 years. It has a 1% chance of happening, so you'd expect it to happen every 100 storms, 100-year storm.
Okay, everything you did over the first, you know, the first, the first page, here, that's more than I can address. But you'd be a south of 21 on North Front Street, broadly with the south of 21. And then the west, Eighth Street. And that where it comes up to Bates. That initial, along that part that comes, you know, something there's a lot of, um, underneath that pile of railroad tracks by the park.
Yeah, there are, there are other, there's other drainage areas.
It's not like we get around it, it's all that blood, but, you know, I mean, it's always the, it's taking everything it can, it's over the road most of the time. Is any of that, is that, I mean, I can see that. Well, I'm sure probably a little bit some, but that's all the water that comes from that, where it was, another, most, big problem here.
Yeah, and that was an area that we, we talked about that as well. They're, they're really too, they're kind of independent until they get to the bottom left of that exhibit there.
Any other questions, Matt?
What's the size of that detention pond?
It's two acres surface area. There may be the potential to, there's a kind of a sliver lot that runs parallel to the tracks if the, if the landowner there will be interested or willing to to part with that. It's not really usable. It's not a very usable space because it's a low area, so it could be a potential to expand it a little bit more. I shouldn't say, there will be, so directing the water into the pond, it will be almost like a berm on adjacent to San Antonio to kind of create more depth, more storage area for that pond.
Yeah, that pond will be right there in front of that removal tree.
Correct.
Most businesses that are built, you know, are developments, you know, have detention ponds for the back of the line, but I mean, was there a lot of new buildings added there? Or was it the same structures on those existing labs? On the little, little plant?
I think there's some new buildings that were built there.
And, I mean, there's new buildings throughout the industrial park.
And I should say, as far as the, the land that we would utilize for this project, I've had some preliminary conversations with Mr. Vile. I think he probably wants to work with us.
I was trying to go like that, he's willing to work on a project that a lot was created. You know, from the industrial park itself, but I think a lot of that's coming from, you know, a lot of the reconstruction, just, you know, there, every year's still part of that burn, you know, part of the structures, culture to other side, you know, trucks. But then, then we built the land, like that slab.
Any other discussion?
So as we, as we go through this, like I mentioned, these are, all three of these projects are a part of that, that mid-mog money, but as we start, we have a very short window to put in. If we start applying for money that's already been, you know, earmarked for us, it doesn't make sense to me, but, but we have a short window to get that application in, so I don't want to have, I don't want to have Strand and the grand administrator writing a proposal for something the council doesn't want to do. So that's kind of what we brought these in from, you know, so we go ahead and say, yes, that's a project we want to take on, and we go ahead and put that application in, so. You know, hopefully, I hope we've answered all your questions. If there's any more, let us know. If anyone wants to move forward.
It should have, this, this money is allocated to the city, but there are specific areas where it has to be used. It's just for mitigation, so it can't just be used to repay a street that, that wouldn't qualify to use this money.
And Jared, you asked me to also.
This, this detention pond, the pipes that I discussed, kind of all the improvements you see on page three there is in the 300, 300,000 range. Really depends on, some of that could help with, you know, offsite some of the dirt that we're digging out of the pond. The JSL owner was interested in that, so that could help be lower those costs even more, if they don't have to shop very far.
So do we have a motion to utilize the Community Development Grant Method of Distribution Funds for a Detention Pond Project to improve drainage flows for the northwest portion of the city?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say anything.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Next, utilizing Community Development Grant Method of Distribution Funds for the procurement of backup generators for water production facilities.
So I've, I've kind of set this up, and we'll just, much as you answer on this one, but early, we have two water production facilities. We've got one at the warehouse, we've got another water production facility off of County Road 300. We currently have backup generation at the warehouse that we can carry the whole system on. It's not easy. We've got to do some, some turning of valves out of the field, but we're able to maintain the two pressure pumps off in that area. This would just provide more redundancy, and, and again, that's, that's the kind of projects that they're looking for on these. So we have a more resilient approach when it comes to disaster events. So this would give us redundancy across the whole system. That way, we can maintain both water production facilities should we have an extended power range. So if we get everything sized to carry the well out of the 300 plus the high-service pump section, push the water up into the water towers, you know, we'll have a better idea of what size generator and the cost on it. We'll go over into that.
Yeah, we did. It's in the 350,000 range with this size generator. It would be a pretty substantial, right? And it would be natural gas. It's a hydrant in the system.
So wait, I mean, that's, that was kind of easy. I don't know if y'all got any questions or?
What's the level of that, of your, of the natural gas?
I think it's more, more cadmium. That's all right. I think it's more, it's, it's pretty substantial. We got, that'll be set, where would that be at?
It's at number up 300.
Any questions?
Do we have a motion to utilize the Community Development Grant Method of Distribution Funds for the procurement of a backup generator for water production facilities? Do we have a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. And last, on the regular agenda, utilizing those same funds for the procurement of a backup generator for lift station facilities.
I start this off by explaining what a lift station is. Most, most of your sewage, if it flows downhill, right, as the, as the saying goes, but you get to a point where it can't flow downhill anymore, and we need to go up the hill. So it falls into a wet well at a lift station, we pump it up the hill, and then it continues to gravity flow the rest of the way. What we're looking at doing here is we're, we want to make sure we utilize all the funds that we're allotted. So I want to make sure and have more than enough projects to, to take care of those funds. Maybe we'll get lucky and these things come in less expensive than what, what they're looking like. But we want to go ahead and apply to have at least one more, one or two more backup generators for some of the lift station projects that we're working on. We're still looking at doing Caldwell Country, Pick Grill, and hopefully Cobbers Hollow with some ARPA funds. And this funding will just supplement that, because ARPA funds, it, it doesn't look like it's going to cover the actual lift stations and the generators. And we, we need backup generation at least at Pick Grill and Caldwell Country. So the idea behind this was to utilize whatever funding we have remaining to go ahead and procure those generators, as, you know, utilizing these funds. We require, TCCQ requires us either have backup generation on site or have that lift station basically backup generation ready, where you could take a mobile unit and just plug it in and, and go. So if, you know, one of the two, it's, it would be nice to have generation on site, so we know, you know, we can monitor that and know that it's, it's on and we're, we're running it. If we, again, hadn't extended out, if you do a storm event or.
That's a smaller generator. It's, the estimate now is around 150, so the three projects combined are around 800,000, which is slightly, just slightly over the allocation.
For much-needed items. Any questions for Camden for the lift station generator? Okay, if not, we do, we have a motion to utilize the Community Development Grant Method of Distribution Funds for the procurement of a backup generator for the lift station facilities. Do we have a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Next, we have Department of Community Reports. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
I have a question about building permits and any type of construction permits. Is there a fine for someone who does not obtain a building permit?
Yeah, that's in ordinance, yes, yes.
Yes.
So another question. So is, when we get a building permit application report, is that, does that contain every permit that was pulled for that reporting period?
Yeah, it should be a monthly report, so it's for that prior month.
Right. It should contain every permit that was pulled. And then, I'm under Code Enforcement Report. I understand Mr. Denson is at a school this week?
He is at a school, I don't know if his co-
Code Enforcement.
And his co-
Yes, yes.
Very good.
So we're excited about it. He's going to pick some of that back up and we're excited to be able to program and make it.
Any comments about the Department of Community Reports? And for those of you who might be new to a council meeting, all of this information is available on the city website in just, it's a couple of clicks away. So the reason it's not shared with this is it's actually on the website. And finally, Administrative Elected Official Reports.
Well, I, I'm just going to briefly, I've, I've been tired quite a bit the last two days, so I'll make it quick. The, talking about the power outage that we had, and kind of where we stand on that. So what happened was, it's basically a, a tap changer on our transformer that will adjust as incoming voltage fluctuates up and down. We've got to take that tap changer and move it, you know, one way or the other to kind of even out the voltage that we put out to the distribution system. So our load tap changer on Monday got hung up all the way at 16 over, so we were pushing out high voltage. So, you know, we suffered, you know, we had, had a lot of issues with that. We tried everything that we could to kind of get that thing back. While we had it under load and it didn't bug, we tried everything. We had technicians from Middle Sierra come in and try to help us out. We exhausted all efforts, so then we ended up having to take that, it was about a 35-minute outage. So during that outage, we were able to pull that, kind of the gearbox that, that runs that LTC, the park. We had basically, the gear teeth got, got out of, out of sequence with, with the rest of the gearbox. So we were able to get in, and we're not sure how that happened, but we were able to get it fixed while it was not under load, put everything back together. What we've done is we've kind of cranked that LTC back down to an acceptable level for the majority of the time. But we have it in manual, so, so we don't know if an electronic problem caused a mechanical problem or vice versa. So what we're doing is we've got that tap changer in manual, so the only way that it moves is if we go over there and push a button and move it up or down. Now, the problem with that is if, if we have fluctuations in incoming power, so our transmission voltage changes drastically. It affects what we push out on the other side.
transmission voltage changes drastically, it affects what we push out on the other side. So we had a couple of periods over, over, what, about ten o'clock last night, about ten thirty this morning, where we had some fluctuations on the transmission system that caused us to spike voltage. So I've reached out to Energy, they're supposed to call me anytime there's any kind of disturbance, if they put a capacitor bank on, that would actually, that would affect the voltage on the system. Anywhere in Texas, they're supposed to give me a call so we can have somebody at the station so we can monitor that voltage and make the adjustments that we need to. So that's kind of the Band-Aid. What we're doing is we're trying to find everything that we can to replace that gearbox, and when we do that, we'll have to take probably a three, four, five-day outage. So we're also working to get a mobile transformer from L C R A that they'll come and they'll park. And if we park it there in the yard, if we get everything done right, there won't be any interruption of power at all. We should be able to, to kind of join the two together and then open up from our transformer and then all of our load will be carried off of their transformer. We can make the repairs for ours, which we need to go through pretty good to kind of see really what, what caused this problem, because it hadn't just happened once, it's kind of locked itself up before. And then just, what do we need to get us to the end of the transformer life on that one? Just kind of give it a little rehab. So we're working on locating all the pieces to that puzzle. When we get them, we'll put a plan together and kind of make sure that public's aware of it. I think it's important to note that we tried to, as soon as we knew we were going to have to take an outage, put it on the website, get a social media post. Y'all probably got the alert on your phones. Coordinated with industries here, school district, and the hospitals. So we tried to do everything we could to get the information out. But, oh, I'm kind of going to stop there, because there was a lot of, any questions?
And it was not a minor repair, it was actually a major ordeal?
Well, anytime you have to work on a transformer, I mean, there's, you know, it felt like we were at risk for having a long outage as in like, probably eighteen to thirty-six hours if we couldn't patch this thing back together. We'd be waiting to get a mobile transformer in and, so there was a potential for it to be worse.
We appreciate the electrical crew doing everything they can.
Very thankful to have those guys. Those guys came in early, worked through long.
Thirty-five minutes out, so appreciate that. Melissa?
I have one thing. I met Raylene Murray. She is in charge of the countywide recycling program. And I don't know if you know, the county is doing a great job of, there's stations throughout for, I know for sure, tires and some other like recycling stations throughout the county. She had just approached me and asked if the city would be interested in purchasing four or six of the recycle trash bins, like when we have a large gathering like a summer concerts, any chamber downtown event, Main Street event, Co-Lux Festival, if we could purchase some of these, and then they would be responsible for picking them back up and taking them where they need to be. So that's something we can talk about later. But anyway, I think that the city can help support the countywide recycling. And this is for water bottles and cans because at a downtown event, glass bottles aren't available, so, you know, just something we can talk about later. But like I said, they're, they're all gun-holing or wanting to do a, like a spring clean, like promotional thing for the county and city. So, anyway. Do you have anything else, guys? I appreciate all of you coming. I love to see a full house because that means you guys are concerned about your community and that is, I would much rather see all of these seats full than one or three chairs full. So again, I thank you all very much for coming. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second? Meeting adjourned.